At this time, I'll call the August 29th, 2019 meeting to order for Dixon County County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due and justice for all.
On the agenda today, we do have some additions, and so we will amend the agenda to include the review and consideration of approval on agreement with KDOT. This is for a road safety study, a resolution to place the sales tax question on the November 5th election ballot, consider a resolution to extend the 35 mile per hour speed zone south of Woodbine, to consider a letter of support for SMART and Connected Mobility Research Grant, and then also we have a resignation letter from Jill Freeman. And so I would move that we accept the amended agenda with these five additions.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll go to the consent agenda. This includes the minutes of the August 22nd meeting, fund expenditures of $346,135.13, a wire payment from KDHE of $145,303.83, and Aflac $30.67.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
Second it. We have the motion and the second for acceptance of the consent agenda. If any question or comment, otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go to commission comments. Craig?
Yes, last Thursday after meeting, Brad and I went to Minneapolis. Our legislators were there, most of them. There was kind of a round table discussion among the commissioners, I mean, the legislators about the issues they thought would be brought up. We did ask a question about the home rule. The gentleman from the new legislator answered the question by talking about, what was it, school finance? So...
We really didn't get an answer.
Yeah, we really didn't get an answer on what the home rule is. For those in the audience, home rule gives us the same authority that the cities would have for light issues in the county and stuff, and we have an issue, in my opinion, with light in the areas and stuff. September 4th, we've got an invitation to the Soil Conservation for Farmers and Ranchers Appreciation Day from 9:00 to 4:00. Be up here in Abilene. It's all day. That's all I have, Lynn.
Okay, thank you. Ron?
I have to compliment Martin on the road work that he's done south of the Dixon County area. I think we're all appreciative of the work that the guys have done, not only the south, but throughout the county. I think our roads earlier coming back and looking a lot better. So, again, I want to compliment the folks on the road.
Okay. Couple items I have. The Eisenhower Museum had an open house, and they're showcasing, and they've had an opening since the remodeling, and I was told that they had the visitors, about 2,000 a week without any extra publicity or the marketing strategy that they're going to put in place, and so they really anticipate some additional interest in that. The County Commission, here we are, members of the Abilene Area Chamber as well as the Harrington Chamber, and the Abilene Chamber had put out that there is also going to be an open house, a business after hours at Waddell at their new location on West Third Street tonight, that we're invited to, to attend if we wish, and I'll probably attend that. And also, the Kansas Coffee, which is a business over at Chapman, is also having an open house this evening. And then I believe also at the Historical Society, Twyla Jackson is retiring, and they're having an open house reception for her, for her many years of service.
What time? I might come into that. Is that 6:00 to 8:00? Do you remember?
Oh, I'd have to look it up, but it seems like that 6 o'clock is in there.
It's 5:00, okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
From the phone.
So, okay. And I don't know if we want to put that on the website, and we won't really...
We probably wouldn't like it.
We might, we're in the same room, but...
Yeah, you might just put activities in Abilene. I can assure you, maybe 10:00.
Okay.
If I get done time, I might go in down to Waddell and read. I might be failing this afternoon, so...
Okay. That's all I have for comments or committee reports. If there would be anyone that would want to make any comment or have a question, you could do so now on any item that is not on the agenda, and if so, you just want to step up to the podium and state your name and address and what your comment or question happens to be. Since there are no comments, we'll go ahead and move on to proclamations. We do have a proclamation here for September 2019, and so I think we have a group here. If you'd like to gather up front here, we'll read your proclamation. And you can just work in behind us.
I think that's better, yeah.
You can kind of spread out, and that way Tim can get a picture and get everybody in here. Thank you. Okay, the proclamation is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month 2019, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas talk of suicide should never be dismissed, if you or someone you know is thinking of suicide, call the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-8255. Whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health and other chronic health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen shares the burden of mental health problems and has a responsibility to promote mental wellness and support suicide prevention efforts. Therefore, we, the Dixon County Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month in Dixon County. As elected county commissioners, we also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Dixon County to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of suicide, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and assessable services for all people with mental health conditions. Signed this 29th day of August 2019. And I would move that we accept this proclamation.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any other discussion before we vote on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And if you would sign that, Tim wants you to look up first.
There we go. Thanks.
And if you would, maybe introduce yourselves, and then whoever you want to have as a spokesperson, or if all three of you want to make comments, we'd be glad to hear from you at this time.
Okay, I'm Vicki Cabarr, and I'm the Director for Quality of Life Coalition.
I'm Janie Wells, and I'm the Director of Senior Life Solutions at Memorial Hospital.
And I'm Pat Brain, and I'm the Community Project Coordinator for the Quality of Life Coalition.
So, we are putting on sponsoring an Abilene Walk for Hope, and this is just to bring awareness to suicide prevention, and what we can do as a community to help identify those at risk and just spread the awareness. We will have flags of remembrance there, so if individuals want to put a name down or initial or something that reminds them of that individual they may have lost to suicide, we'll have a special place that they can put those flags. We will be also having kindness rocks projects going on, and they will be doing rocks with positive sayings or words on there that they can decorate those.
And we're actually working with the schools to create and paint the walks and spread them around the community, and also be having them at the Rose Garden.
And I think our strongest message is that suicide is preventable. Dixon County, in the last several years, has had a rate triple that of the state of Kansas for suicides of all ages. It's struck all of us, and it's something we hold dear to our hearts, but suicide is preventable. We want people to talk about it and to not have it be a secret.
Well, thank you for all of your work, and, you know, as you mentioned, I mean, the awareness factor, but just being alert, and it is hard to identify, so it's good the collaborative effort that you have and with schools and all the other agencies in mental health and so on locally, and thank you for having this Walk for Hope, and thank you for being here. And who's going to receive this? Yes?
We'd like to invite you to attend our Walk for Hope too on the 19th.
Okay.
Okay.
You might...
Thanks.
Yeah, we might put that just on the agenda to, on the 19th on Thursday, and then that way we'll kind of have a reminder. This is from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it mentions here that people can come out and walk anytime, so not necessarily the whole two hours, but...
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a walk. Just come, and if you can walk 10 minutes.
It's a beautiful, serene setting, but thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and have reports of county officers, and so Brad, if you would give us your report, please.
Well, I'm glad to report that we got our dump truck back for repairs. Everything is working good. Martin said he was going to run it for the next month or so, pretty diligently, just to make sure there's no issues with it. The final bill was just shy of $39,000. Of course, AIPCH is paying that, and ours, but we were pleased to see that we got it back earlier this week, so... We're also pleased to say that Station 2's repairs are done, finally. I was down there yesterday, and Chancey was down there. We got everything taken care of. Not only did we have to do the repairs to the foundation, of course, they had to take out the carpet, put carpet back, do that type of stuff, but when we went to fire up the air conditioner clean last week, the compressor blew out, so we had to put a new air conditioner compressor in yesterday. Of course, it's 15 years old, but at any rate, seemed like one thing led to another, but we do have to move back in now, and it looks really nice, and I think we're good to go for many years, so... Jail progress? I don't know, you know, if you haven't looked outside, we've got flags on the ground, we've got some construction stuff showing up over here to the east. It's my understanding that Tuesday, the boring company is supposed to be here and start digging up along the north side of the property for the electrical access and then boring underneath K-15 or Buckeye. They were waiting on a permit to get to do that from KDOT. They do have the permit in hand now. Tuesday, the Kansas, or West Star, what is his name this week?
Evergi.
Put a new pole in across the street, which is the one that the power will come off of, come underneath Buckeye over, and then eventually come into our building. So, things are progressing there, and I'm told that by Tuesday or Wednesday next week, the fence company is supposed to be here and start fencing off our east parking lot, so I've sent those out to the departments that be prepared to alter your parking, your normal parking strategy, so things are starting to move, and I think we'll start seeing things happen here pretty quick, so... We talked in the work session about the off-system bridge application, and I'll get back with BG on that, and see if they can try and work something out to get that daughter mapped down, and explain to Martin Lim and I'll go from there, so that's all I've got.
Okay. Thank you. And Doug was in here earlier and just left us information and didn't have anything in particular to...
Yeah, I think he's still here, he's just out talking to him in the hall, and I brought it back, so...
Okay. We'll go ahead and go to some of the additions to our agenda, and Jill is here, so I think at this time, I'll go ahead and, we have a resignation letter, and it's to the Dixon County Board of Commissioners. Please accept this letter as formal notice of my resignation as Dixon County Register of Deeds. I intend for this resignation to be effective on September 30th, 2019. It has been a great honor to serve the citizens of Dixon County as Register since August 2008, when I was appointed by the Honorable Governor Kathleen Sebelius. I am sorry to be leaving before my term is over, however I feel. It is time to step down. Thank you, and it is signed by Jill Freeman or Karen J. Freeman. I always just thought Jill, so...
You didn't know that.
Yes. Would you want to make any comments beyond the letter, or...
Just that I've enjoyed it. It's been a quick 32 years that I've been here, so...
So, you were working Register of Deeds before you were appointed?
Yeah.
And so you've been here 32 years?
I started August, I don't know, something like 1987, so...
Well, thank you for all of your work, and, you know, when you think back, how many elections that involves...
Yeah, well, I've been through two.
Yourself.
Yeah.
So, you know, it certainly shows a vote of confidence and appreciation that the county has for you and the work that you've done, but also it's of great importance, obviously, the record keeping involved with the Register of Deeds, and has there been quite a few changes, or...
A lot, yes.
Such as?
When we started, we were microfilming. We had this huge machine that was massive, and you'd spend hours microfilming, and it had chemicals you'd have to go down, but it was just awful. We do everything digitally now, so makes things much simpler.
Well, I would move that, with regrets, but understanding of the situation, we accept this letter of resignation.
Okay. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Just one other kind of quick part of business, especially since Tim is here, and also this is being recorded, but the, procedurally, do you want me to go over that, or would you want to kind of say, you know, what happens next? Because you mentioned you were appointed by Governor Sebelius.
Right. I know, I notified the governor and Secretary of State and the Republican Party here in Dixon County, which I have letters ready for them, so yours was just the first one.
Well, thank you. And procedurally, since Jill is Republican and ran as a Republican for the office, procedurally it will go to the county chairman, Travis Sawyer.
Yes.
Will have to provide notice to the press and public, but also to the precinct committee people that there will be a meeting held so many days after your resignation, and they will call a meeting, and those precinct committee people of the Republican Party for the county will then make a decision to recommend someone to the governor, and then it will be up to the governor to appoint. So, well, thank you so much, and appreciate all the work you've done.
It's been fun.
And we're going to have some reception a month or so from now, so we'll get a chance to thank you again.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, I'll work, appreciate, so... Okay, I want to back up. Doug, did you have anything that you'd want to bring up? Brad's already given his report.
Okay. Well, we're working on that class action in regards to the opiate cases, and you may or may not be aware, but there was a decision given on the first case, which is a test case, and the judgment came back in, the judge determined the amount of damages in that particular locale was about twice the amount that the drug companies were anticipating. It came in at $572 million, about twice, so there's appeal resulted from that, and there are a number of, well, not necessarily test cases, but cases that will set the standard for what the drug company may realistically believe would be the risk that they would have if they went to trial. And that may be used for class actions for the purposes of being able to settle, so there's not thousands and thousands of cases being tried. And so, we're working on that, finishing up paperwork to get all the information we need, and Brad's done a great job getting it to us, and we're in the process of assembling that, and there's deadlines that have to be made, and then that class action continues to move forward, because as you know, Dixon County was very aggressive at the very early stages of this. We hooked up with a group that has a number of cases, some out of California and the Kansas City area, and we're connected with that in an effort to be able to move this case as quickly as we can, and that's what's going on with it, so been rather consumed with that.
Okay, thank you. Any question or comment? Okay, we're going to go back to items that we have added to the agenda. At this time, we have to consider agreement with KDOT, and Brad, would you summarize that for us, please?
Yes, this has to do with the local road safety plan that we're required to do. Every county is required to submit one to the state. The options that we have, we can either go out and contract to do one on our own, or we can partner with other counties, which is what we have done through KDOT. There's 19 other counties and ourselves that have chosen to participate in that. KDOT pays 90% of that cost, and our 10% is $5,152.66. So, by agreeing to a court of fiat on this, they'll get all the arrangements made and take care of everything, we just have to pay them, and there's two copies in the agreement.
Okay. So, we'll need a motion to enter this agreement with KDOT for road safety on the study for that.
So, move.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And there's a place for all of us to sign on this, and then Doug, there's going to be something we had earlier too, I think, that you'll need to sign if you're...
We've got Barb left here for you to...
Okay, thank you.
Put it right here in the yellow folder, just one.
There's two places here. Okay, the next item is to consider a resolution for the placement of a sales tax question on the November 5th election here in Dixon County. So, Brad?
This is a resolution that authorizes Barb to put the sales tax question on the ballot in November, and it's Resolution 082919.
Earlier this morning too, in our work study session, we heard from a committee that is working diligently to provide information to the public regarding road and bridge improvements and kind of a sales tax fact sheet to give everybody an opportunity to be informed, and we've had discussions that we would have a map that would show some of the previous projects that we have had, you know, such as the Solomon to Chapman, Jeep Road to Old Forty, shoulder widening, some of the other projects, some of the bridge repairs, but it's just to kind of give information that this would be monies that would be specifically for road and bridges, and that if it were a sales tax, the people that would be contributing to this would not only be residents that make purchases in Dixon County, but you have all the people that are traveling through and stopping at Love's, or stopping at McDonald's, or buying a car from out of town, or stopping at the Eisenhower Library, but it helps us tremendously with highways and bridges, so we want to have this information out, but the first step we have here is that of that resolution, so it would be on the ballot. The resolution is 082919, and this is authorizing the continuation of a special half percent countywide retailers' sales tax for road and bridge improvements.
I move to accept the resolution, 082919, for roads.
I'll second it. So, we have the resolution 082919. Is there any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And Ron and Craig, there's a place for you to sign on that also. The next item we had is to consider a resolution, and this was to extend the 35 mile per hour speed zone south of Woodbine.
This comes about as a request from a couple residents in Woodbine that called our attention a hazard that Martin looked at and felt like was justified. From, on the west side of Woodbine, on Union Road, the speed limit currently reduces at the parallel to the city limits. Just south of the city limits is a Woodbine cemetery that extends out a little over 1,000 feet. There is a hill crest there, and as people are coming from the south, you can't see two of the entrances for pulling in and out of that cemetery, so the request was, and the resolution reads, that we would extend that 35 mile an hour reduced speed down to the south edge of the cemetery. So, as people are coming north, they would reduce their speed and have enough stopping distance if someone's pulling out of the cemetery for whatever reason, so we think it's certainly a safety issue, and warrants making that change, so...
Okay. This resolution is 082919A. And I would move that we adopt that resolution.
Second it.
We have the motion and second to adopt Resolution 082919A, and this is extending the speed zone along certain portion of Union Road, and as Brad had described, so it would be a 35 mile per hour zone just through the south edge of the city limits, extending to where the cemetery entrances are. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and once again, we've got signatures. The last item that we added to the agenda is to consider a letter of support for SMART and Connected Mobility Research, and that's a grant?
This is actually, it would be a grant, but this comes about from Doug McKinney through Chuck Scott. A Dr. Aziz at Kansas State University, who is in charge of one of the departments there, is looking at doing a research study to, that would determine whether or not further activity is warranted, and it has to do with the technology to connect communities of our size with larger communities, and we sit, of course, between the Junction City, Manhattan, and Salina areas, and would be perfect participants in that, so there's no cost for us. The grant that he is seeking now is just to determine whether or not any future, if they would be awarded to do the future program, and we would certainly provide any information to him that needed to be, or assistance if he is awarded, but they were asking just for a letter of support to obtain that particular startup grant, which is not to exceed $150,000 in the grant amount. There is no cost to us, so...
Okay.
That's about the best I can explain it, I guess, so...
It sounds good. Is there a motion to go ahead and send this letter?
So move.
The motion and the second to send this letter to the National Science Foundation and for the SMART Connected Mobility Research. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will mention on notices and communications, before we go to other business, I should have mentioned earlier, but we also have, I did say that we are a member of the Tri-County Area Chamber of Commerce, and they are having a business after hours and wanted to invite the commission to attend if possible. It's Thursday, September 29th at 5:30 p.m. It's at the Harrington Hospital, and so they are just wanting to have opportunity for people to see the hospital and network, and we are a chamber member there also. Okay, we do not have any other resolutions. There's no unfinished business. Under other business, we did have, and James, I appreciate your patience. You were here early, and here we put you at the end of the agenda, but to consider the approval of a conditional use permit, 19-4, for James Simmons to operate a commercial salvage yard at 456 Highway 77 Harrington. Tim, you're here also, so yes, give us the information on that, please.
Okay, the applicant is proposing multiple interrelated commercial uses on a property previously occupied by Ham Warries LLC. The previous use on the site was a large industrial machinery repair and storage yard. The applicant has applied for a license to operate in auto sales and salvage business as well as towing and vehicle service business. The applicant has indicated that weed and rodent control will be a priority on this property. The primary issues for salvage operations are environmental in nature. This property has a privacy fence with an existing commercial structure on it. There is currently a residential use to the north of the property. use to the north of the property. There appears to be adequate buffering between the adjacent residential uses to the north. This includes a privacy fence along with a pretty significant landscape screen. The accessory structure near the southeast corner of the property will be used as a watchman's, night watchman's quarters. In 2017, the county approved a similar use for an impound lot within, with conditions limiting the total number of vehicles stored outside. Public comments, staff had received early on concerns from the property to the north. When I've been in contact with that person since the, the hearing, the public hearing with the planning commission, and I explained the conditions that were going to be put on it, and they said they have no issue with it now. Their main concern was visibility over and above the line of sight for the fence. And based on the conditions that were, had been placed on it, that seems to have satisfied the residents nearby. Other departments and agencies, no, no other comments from departments or agencies at this time. The applicant has discussed the property with environmental services, and I think is still working with Randy Barton on, on that situation there. I won't go through all the review criteria. They're pretty self-explanatory. Staff is recommending approval, as is the planning commission, of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. Any outdoor lighting attached to the buildings and related to the commercial use be shielded or aimed away from adjacent residential uses. Applicant must provide staff with a copy of the appropriate state license. Applicant must abide by all state and federal environmental licensing requirements. Staff will perform an annual inspection to verify compliance with all the conditions of the conditional use permit. If stacked, this is something that was added by the planning commission. If stacked, vehicles shall not exceed four vehicles in height or otherwise not be visible beyond the privacy fence. The, it's my understanding that James is not intending to stack the vehicles because that ultimately ruins the, or devalues, value of what, what he has to, to salvage. So, there won't be, according to, according to the applicant, no stacking of vehicles. And in addition, the applicant, James is going to be putting some additional distance between the fence, the privacy fence, and where the cars are actually going to be stored. And so, that's an additional buffering as well. The total number of cars right now, I think that the legally for a salvage yard is three, you said 3,000?
Well, I'm not sure about the actual legal number, but what we were expecting to be able to put into that location would be no more than that, for sure. It would be less than that.
And the way that the cars will be arranged on the lot, I have a, a small site plan I wanted to kind of submit and show.
How many, how many acres is there?
That is...
Or maybe talking split, and I just didn't look at it here. 5.8?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's basically going to gravel the area up here. I'll, I'll pass this around to you all as well. This is kind of gives you an idea of where he's proposing. This is the, going to be the accessory building that's going to house the night watchman's quarters down here. The, currently, he has vehicles that are impounded right in here. And then he says that the, basically this area here with a buffer of about, I guess, 10, 20 feet, something like that, from this fence, the privacy fence is up here.
10, 20.
It depends on, you know, how, you know, he's going to have a, there's a significant buffering between here anyway, between the fence and the house. There's about 15 to 20 feet. I scaled it off. And it's, but when you add where he's going to actually be putting, they will not be up against the fence. And that was one of the concerns of the neighbor is that they would be right up against the fence. They won't be, they'll be, they'll be set back.
How far?
How far, James?
I mean, I like that in the record, you know, how far they're going to be.
As far as feet goes, I'm not sure, but we will have plenty of room to, to maintain the grass area around it. If there are any kind of weeds or anything, we'd be able to drive a, a machine between the fence and the cars that's on that side.
But you needed, you needed a certain distance, you said, to get the, your, your loaders and stuff around there anyway.
Exactly.
Okay.
It will be a, a distance great enough to maneuver a piece of machinery between the fence and the cars to be able to maintain the ground and to move the cars if we need to.
Did you want that added as a condition, Craig, so it's specified, or is it just answer the question, the, that's implied?
I mean, yeah. To me, it, you know, if, if it changes hands, is there going to be something on there? I mean, I hope you stay in business forever, but if you don't, what, what, what are we going to have when you get ready to sell, you know, the business? And we don't have an agreement there that, you know, something needs to be 12 foot or 15 foot? I mean, I, you know, what, what do you, how many feet do you need as a minimum?
Well, 10 feet.
Okay. I like to have that put in there, you know, a minimum of 10 foot. I mean, just to, you know, so it's, you know, it's, you know, it's, what I think is reasonable and you think is reasonable, is not germane to what, you know, what somebody else might think.
So, that's minimum on the north fence or just all fence areas?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make that change as soon as you all are done, and then I'll...
Well, you think it's unreasonable? I mean, is that, okay?
That's not unreasonable, I mean.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, just clarifies it.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, on the conditional use permit, it's, as Tim had mentioned, there is the external lighting that's directed within the boundaries. The vehicles are behind the privacy fence, not to exceed four vehicles in height. Applicant provides staff a copy of his approved state license. And there's also an applicant must abide by all state, federal, environmental, and licensing requirement. And then we do have here that staff can perform annual inspections to ver, verify compliance. And then we'll be adding on, and you can wordsmith this a little better, but it's the 10-foot minimum buffer on the fenced area.
Okay.
So, I'd move that we go ahead and approve this conditional use permit with those conditions on it for 456 Highway 77 Harrington, Kansas.
Mr. Chair, I, I have a couple of questions, if I might.
Okay, yes, sir.
May I?
Yes, yes, please.
What's the exit plan for this upon your passing?
Well, hopefully, I have children. I'm hoping that they'll carry it, hopefully.
Okay. And is this a corporation or is this going to be individually?
It's an LLC.
It's an LLC. And the family members or the others?
My wife.
Anybody else in the LLC?
Just my wife.
Okay. Are you crushing cars at this area?
We will probably have to eventually have some type of crusher come in to do some crushing. But as of now, our, our initial plans are not to actually be in the crushing business. We're in the sales business of the, of the, the parts. So, but at some point, there will be a time when those parts are exhausted and, and the cars will have to be crushed. And then they'll come in, they'll crush the cars and haul them away.
Okay. And you're not intending to bury any automotive parts there?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does any of that need to be specified, or is it just a matter of just knowing the, hearing the answers?
Now that we've had that question, which I hadn't thought of before, is there going to be an environmental problem with, you know, are you going to drain all the oil out and the gasoline?
They, you know, I think you'll drain everything out, yeah.
Yes, sir. The plan is not to do too much of, if any, of the work in the yard out where the cars will be sitting at. The, the idea for us is to, to have a specified area to do everything as far as draining all fluids and removing the parts up closer to the shop, so we can utilize the facility and the resources that's up there, not necessarily have to drag everything out on the yard. It makes it so much easier to bring everything up. And we'll go through a process and procedure before we put them on the yard to make sure all the fluids are drained and everything that's removed, or we remove everything that is vital for us to make any kind of...
Well, you know, it's like all layers and starters and stuff like that. You're going to remove them, but you, you know, set them out there, you know, somebody wants a fender, you, you know, I could take that off probably and store it.
We're, we're not going to take anything off of the vehicle other than the, the initial stuff. Catalytic converters have a, some radiators and stuff like that, but we'll drain the fluids from the gas tanks. We'll drain all the coolant and all the engine oils and stuff before we put them in the yard.
Yeah, but you're going to have a parts business there to sell parts out of? Is that my correct there?
We'll sell the used parts, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and we'll go, the plan is to have a front end loader type of piece of equipment to go down, bring the car back up. We'll have a little area designated to remove parts.
Right. Somebody comes in and wants a fender off, or something, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Like Hesse does that over Junction City, that hell loader that they have a storage and they bring, or flip that.
And one of the conditions here is that to abide by the environmental and licensing requirements, state and federal, so, but good clarifications. Any other comments? I'll go ahead and keep my motion the same as it was before.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, we, we have the motion for this location, 456 Highway 77 Harrington, Kansas, with the conditions the staff outlined, plus the one additional one of the 10-foot minimum buffer on the fenced areas. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I went ahead and signed this and penciled it in, but I think what Tim wants to do is revise it, and then he'll have me sign it. But thank you and good luck with your business and...
Appreciate it.
It's good to have businesses anywhere in the county. So, thank you for coming today. Thanks for your patience.
Good job, Ken.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I don't believe we have anything else, so I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have the motion and the second for adjournment. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.